Welcome, everybody. Rick's excited to get started, so I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we always start off with public comment. Is anybody here for public comment? Is this all one subject?
Yes.
So you get three minutes, no repeats, okay? You can't say the same thing to the other person just yet. Three-minute time, and tell me who wants to go first.
I'm the volunteer. Do you want me to go first?
Yep, introduce yourself, tell us who, what, where, when, or why.
You got it. Tested.
You gotta get really close to that mic.
You have to kind of eat it, sorry. I didn't have dinner, I'll inhale it. All right. Hi, my name is Nicole Brinkley. I am a tenant at Village Green here in Rhinebeck, as well as the manager of Oblong Books, which is somewhere that way, I think. Got turned around, the manager of the building. And I'd like to encourage all of you to pursue and pass Good Cause Eviction here in Rhinebeck. So as a renter here in Rhinebeck, most of the reason I can afford to live here is luck. I assembled into a sublet apartment at the right time and managed to get an affordable rental rate that no longer exists in our complex. And I've looked at the prices, and I couldn't afford anywhere else in Rhinebeck now, despite the fact that I've worked here and supported this town for over a decade now. And right now, it's a matter of time before my luck and the luck of other renters in Rhinebeck run out. Paying more than a third of your wages is kind of a normal experience in Rhinebeck. Praying that it doesn't get higher is the normal experience. I've talked to other renters at Village Green, and all of us are concerned about this. Older folks who have lived here for decades are worried that the rents are going to be raised beyond what they can afford, and they don't know where they're going to go. Families are afraid of being separated from their jobs, and the kids in those families are being afraid of being separated from their schools. This isn't a problem limited to my apartment complex. As the manager of Oblong and as an employer, this is something that all of my employees are facing as well. A lot of them would love to be able to live here, but the rents keep getting higher and higher, and so even though they come here and they spend 40 hours a week here and spend all their money here, they can't afford to live here. Statistics on tenant protection show that despite protests landlords can continue to afford running their businesses, and developers will still build properties in areas with good cause eviction. So no matter what other people may say, statistically, there is no downside. I love Rhinebeck. It is a town that makes all my friends jealous when they come to visit it. It is walkable and cute and independent and has one of the best communities in the Hudson Valley. Communities show up for each other and support each other and help protect each other, and I'd like to see us protect our community by putting Good Cause Eviction protections in place. So please support Good Cause Eviction, and if nothing I've said has impacted you, please do it just so I can keep living here. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Hannah DiNofrio. I'm also a tenant at Village Green. I moved in at the start of 2023, but I am a Red Hook High School graduate, so I'm from the area and have lived here my whole life. I have, since I've moved in two years ago, my rent has gone up 16%. The first year went up 5.5%, which was feasible, and this past year it was 10.5%. Every time that I've asked about these increases, they've said that it's a higher-than-normal increase, and it's due to the economy, which I totally understand. But I think that the economy is affecting all of us, and I think that that needs to be reflected in, you know, the economics of the local community. I've looked for other rental situations in the area, and there aren't any that are comparable, and I think that the landlords know that and are taking some advantage of the tenants in raising their rents like this. I really like Village Green. I don't want to seem like I'm bashing it all. It's been a great living experience. My parents live on Rock Cliff Road. We're members of the community. I love living here. I would just really hope to be able to continue to do so, so I would really encourage you all to pass the Good Cause Eviction, because, you know, there are a lot of us that just want to thrive in our local community and live in walking distance of some of our shops so that we can continue to go spend money there.
Thank you. Next. Remember, no repeats, three minutes. I'm hearing a common theme here, so.
I'm also here to ask you to support Good Cause Eviction. My name's Michelle Montalbano. I'm a tenant on South Street, and I'm the program director at Star Library. Whenever people give presentations about issues like affordable housing, they include case examples to illustrate the point. Here's one. A public library with a master's degree in a small village makes $60,000 a year. Her rent in the village where she works is $2,000 a month. That's 40% of her income, which makes her a cost-burdened renter. What's more, she's on a month-to-month lease, as of last year, giving her little in the way of housing security. When she checked in with the other tenants in her building, she learned that one of them had been on month-to-month lease for a decade. If this is my story, imagine how common these situations are. I pay $2,000 to live in the village, and I realize, as I say this aloud, that I actually feel some shame that my rent is so high, me, the person who is paying that. Zillow puts the market value of my one bedroom apartment at $1,770, a number which would provide me some relief and allow me to stay in my home for longer and continue to put roots down in this community. If I felt comfortable enough to negotiate for a rent reduction based on fair market value, which I might if Good Cause Eviction were in place, I wouldn't actually know who to get in touch with, because the house where I live has been sold or is in the process of being sold, and it's unclear to me who the actual owner is right now. So that's why I was moved to a month-to-month lease. I have been verbally assured that my housing is safe, but legally, I don't have any assurance. My sink was leaking for a month or two recently, wasting a ton of water, and while I eventually got it fixed, I didn't want to press too hard, knowing that things weren't locked in and not wanting to take any risks. So why do I pay $2,000 a month to live in the village? It's worth it to me to live walking distance from the library when I devote so much of my time and energy to bringing services and programs to this community. And I want to be embedded in the community, but does this community want to make it possible for people like me to stay here? This is my story. I'm one person, and my relative privilege is obvious. So imagine how much this impacts people who are much more vulnerable than me, who, like me, are one medical bill, emergency, car repair, or some other unforeseen expense away from falling behind on rent and potentially being evicted simply because their cost of living is not sustainable. Currently, over 50% of renters in the village pay 30% or more of their income in rent, which is defined as being cost-burdened. So if the village of Rhinebeck is truly invested in affordable housing as one of its core values, as stated pretty clearly in the comp plan, it's imperative to make meaningful changes to actually benefit renters. Good Cause Eviction is one step. It is actually so loose that its protections don't even apply to the house I live in, because it's only four units. ADUs are another step. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle.
Hi there. My name's Teddy Archwager. I'm here to give comment on behalf of my sister who couldn't make it tonight. Clara, she lives over on Huntington, and she just had a fussy baby tonight, so I'll read that. So my name is Clara Archwager. I live on Huntington Street with my husband, James, and as of last November, our newborn baby, Jude. Growing up here in Rhinebeck and being able to share that connection with my son is very important to me. Part of what makes this a great place is that Rhinebeck has a real community here. A lot of people talk about preserving Rhinebeck's character, and this effort to opt into the state's Good Cause Eviction protections are absolutely a part of that. People I know with plenty of education, master's degrees, who work middle-class jobs, even households with two incomes like my own, are struggling to stay. People I've known here my whole life who want to continue to simply live in the place they built up their homes and their families aren't able to stay as they go into retirement. This resolution doesn't fix everything. There's a housing crisis that has many facets, but it's an important step in the right direction. We've now seen many places upstate, from small towns to cities, adopt these protections without issue, but instead, it has given a little more peace of mind to a lot of people who are at risk of being forced out of their homes. And I'll just briefly say, in my day job, I work with our local state assembly member, our representative, and in my experience with the New York State Legislature, this specific bill was the result of a five-year negotiation, or fight, with, obviously, tenants, tenants' rights organizations, but also homeowners' associations, landlord organizations, and real estate developers. And in my opinion on that fight, this is, frankly, this is the most watered-down version of the bill while still retaining some of the original character of the bill. And it has been a negotiation, a collaborative effort with all of those organizations, and has now passed in numerous towns of different sizes and cities upstate, and has not been a hindrance to development here or elsewhere, so I did want to emphasize that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Fenton Johnson. I'm a retired university professor and an author who moved to Rhinebeck three years ago, after the first year I was, in fact, kicked out of the apartment that I was renting. I speak because I think my situation is a little bit unusual. I have been a landlord. I've been a homeowner. I was advised by my financial advisor and my attorney that at my age, it might make more sense to rent than to buy. Statistically, that is true. I have rented all over this country, Washington, Kentucky, Arizona, all over the Bay Area, France, Iowa, in my career of moving around. I was frankly astounded to come here and find out how little rights tenants have in upstate New York. In passing legislation like this, the village would only be bringing itself into conformity with the policies of every place that I have rented. I sent my financial advisor and attorney a note saying, "You need to revise your advice for people who live in upstate New York," because they were unaware that there were places where tenants had so few rights. I'm probably going to buy property in Rhinebeck. I just wanted to rent for a while. I'm finishing a book, but I came, because I'm the old guy, to lend support to these young people's voices, and particularly the perspective that we need to watch out for these people if we want to have a healthy employment and vibrant community. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you all for your service. It's a fantastic job, really.
Not tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charles, and I live in the village south of South Street on South Parsonage. I'm here tonight to also support Good Cause. My wife and I moved here 10 years ago. We now have two little ones, a three-year-old and a one-year-old. We rented to begin with, and now we own. We were fortunate enough to make it through before the pandemic. I just wanted to address, without being repetitive, one common thing that I've heard that I think is a pretty malicious falsehood, which is that this Good Cause legislation would in some way discourage new development. Teddy touched on this. I just wanted to underline that I think that this is particularly outrageous, you know, in light of the exemption that prohibits the Good Cause legislation covering buildings and new development, if anything, in the last 30 years. It would seem that whoever's spreading this falsehood would take us to be fools. And not only that, that there's such little, if not any, evidence to suggest that this would discourage new development, especially in a place like the Hudson Valley or Rhinebeck, where we live in a very desirable place. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't think we're fools. I think this is an easy decision. It's not that hard, and I'm looking forward to this passing 5 to 0 in the next few months. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Are you doing general public comment or?
Yeah, this is general public comment.
I just have a question. And I'm sorry, mine is way less serious than what everyone else is talking about.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, hi, Cecilia. I live on Manor Road, and I'm wondering why Manor Road is not getting the brining. Instead, we're getting salted.
So that's a simple answer. In our experiment.
See, I'm sorry, just a simple question.
I'll answer that question, because it's a very simple answer. In our experiments in terms of brining, brining is a salt solution that can put down. High-traffic areas, it works very well in. Low-traffic areas, it's not performing very well for us.
Got it.
Manor being, as you know, a low-traffic area. So we are concentrating on brining on a major.
Also, we got a lot of sun, so the snow doesn't melt right away, so that's why I was curious.
We made that decision two years ago.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I noticed that in the last snowstorm, because Mulberry was brined, but Livingston wasn't.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Doesn't work.
But we just know the melting doesn't happen very fast on our road because of the way the sun travels, so I didn't know that brining would work better.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. We're going to move on. We have a presentation tonight, Midyear 2024-25 Midyear Budget Review by our treasurer, Pamela Cloughlin.
Don't be strangers.
The return is up here. Okay, good evening. First, I wish you all the best of health, happiness, and to thrive in 2025. My report is a collaboration with Miranda Wyatt, who has been working on our Laserfish. So I'll start with deliverables. It's not just what we budget, or what did we receive, what did we expend. It is also what have we accomplished? So I'll start with reviewing. We'll start with a review of payrolls and salary. So in this chart, there are 26 pay periods. This chart represents 15 or 58%. There's 42% remaining for the fiscal year, and if we go to each department, the general administrative, 39%, planning, building, and zoning, 56%, police, 42%, court, 37%, highway, 47%, water and sewer, 40%. The general administrative and court departments are tracking to go over budget slightly as they are under the percentage required to stay within the assigned budget. Even though overtime is not often used, it was not budgeted for this current fiscal year. Similarly, the water and sewer departments are now fully staffed and will need to plan their schedules and monitor their overtime. Planning, building, and zoning are in good shape as the hiring of the full-time zoning administrator was postponed until January. Police and highway look good currently, however, it is important to understand that there is still much winter to go in terms of snow removal, plowing, and street maintenance. If we go to the, on the revenue side, this chart illustrates revenue received at the six-month mark. Village taxes always look good as, at this point, as we received them upfront in June. We are made whole in April. Unpaid taxes in November are sent to Dutchess County for re-levy. In terms of revenue, we look at trends, conservative forecasting, and making the best estimates. The fire contract with the town of Rhinebeck for fire protection is paid in February. As you can see, planning, zoning, and building are up. The fees are up as building and planning and zoning activity remains high. Other revenues include cell tower rental, cable franchise fees, department income, as well as a police grant and a grant for Asher Dam. Interest earnings will exceed their budgets this year.
Even after we increase the budget? Wow, good for us.
Increase it.
We increase it. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but we increased it as part of the budget process, and it's still going to out?
Yes. I don't think it will. Next year?
Well, that's okay. We're in this year, so. We'll take the win.
Yes, we're in this year, so.
Yeah.
So I'll just go through. I'm going to, so water, this is the budget. This is where we're at right now. We just collected the hydrant fee, and this is our interest earnings and other revenue. On the sewer side, the same thing. Budget, almost at the halfway point. We are on track both in water and sewer to reach the anticipated revenue budgeted in each of these funds, barring there's no unforeseen expenses. So this chart illustrates revenues received, the gray line, expenses, the orange line, and the annual budget is the blue line. So water and sewer appear even overall. The January quarterly billing has not been recorded, and I anticipate revenues covering expenses unless there are any unforeseen expenses. The general fund has extended, has expended 65% of its budget. However, this includes the annual retirement payment, the purchase of the new highway dump truck that was fully funded by the sale of the old one, police equipment and supplies that's covered by grants. The New York State retirement payment was over budget due to the increase being announced after the budget was finalized. On the revenue side, all looks on track to meet or exceed the budgets. Okay, so this, this chart is the fund balance analysis. So I just want to go through. So we take our 23, 24 fund balance. We less any of our reserves that we plan to keep, keep up. We, we take 25% of our investments in security that we plan to retain, which gives us our unassigned fund balance. We add our year-to-date revenues, take away our year-to-date expenses, and our estimated fund balance as of December 31st is $1,098,374. The same process goes for the water, and the same process goes for the sewer. The water is lower because we are in the process of doing a water project, and we have more expenses in the water at this point. The sewer is looking good, but we will be embarking on a large sewer project shortly. So at the end of the 23, 24 year, we declared our surplus fund balance of $541,337. And during, so far during these, we draw down on it, like many of these are 23, 24 expenses that rolled over, grants rolled over, payments that the board authorized to make to Fire Street Police, Fire Department. We paid a lease this year from the last year's budget, and all of that to date brings us down to $425,130.
And that's above the 25%, right?
This is for, for this current year right now, above the 25%.
Right. Okay.
So, and I always like to clarify that it is the goal of the village to achieve and maintain an unassigned fund balance in the general fund at the fiscal year-end in the range of 15% to 25% of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. This minimum fund balance is to protect against cash flow shortfalls related to timing or projected revenue receipts and to maintain a budget stabilization commitment. So this year, our goal, our, this year, our range of the, is 15 to 25% is $449,000 to the $748,611. The next budget season, 25, 26, or let me just back up. So should unassigned fund balance of the general fund exceed the maximum 25% range, the village will consider such fund balance as surplus for one-time expenditures that are non-recurring in nature and which will not require additional future expense outlays for maintenance, additional staffing, or other recurring expenditures. This next year budget, season 25, 26, will be incredibly challenging as the cost of labor, health insurance, equipment, services, and the retirement system annual payment continue to rise. The village board and staff are committed to the future growth and prosperity of the village of Rhinebeck. As we finish where we began, identifying deliverables and accomplishments, I would like to introduce and report that Miranda Wyatt has been digitizing the files and maps for the planning and building and zoning departments. We're excited about her progress, as she will spearhead this effort with the village records and other departments. So if any, I would answer any questions anybody has about my midyear review, and then I will introduce Miranda.
I have so many ideas, but.
You don't have to do all of them.
But not tonight.
Yeah, I need to get together with you and Gary about this.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Miranda Wyatt. I work in the building, planning, zoning department as the records clerk. So just wanted to comment or give a presentation about Laserfish. It is a scanning program that we use within the building. It has been a hectic year for everyone, including many changes. One of those changes being that the building, planning, and zoning department has begun entire, digitizing the entire office. With the help of a remarkable program called Laserfish, my long-term goal is to work with each department to digitize all documentation. A breakdown of Laserfish. What is it? Laserfish is a global leader in content management and process automation. Why should we use it? Laserfish is revolutionizing how businesses manage documents and streamline time-consuming processes. How does it all work? A simple explanation would be that you take a document and feed it through a scanner, which is integrated with Laserfish. The document then becomes a file within the repository. You can assign said file with the property address, tax ID, and breakdown of which department it belongs to. This is especially amazing for the building, planning, and zoning department records, because they cannot be stored within the same file. Almost have their own location. After you have completed programming your file, it will be immediately routed to your proper address or location. Why is it beneficial to our municipality? Laserfish will allow for departments to have access to decades worth of records within seconds and the same benefit for our residents. Examples. Foil requests. The average foil request takes a week to complete. Having immediate access would make that a much shorter process for the clerk handling the matter and the resident waiting to receive the documents. Site plans. Site plans are very hard to store and maintain because they are large-format documents. It is understood that a single hard copy of a site plan is beneficial for planning stages, but after that, they're not needed. They can be accessed digitally at any point. This eliminates the need for residents or clients appearing. This eliminates the need for residents or clients appearing before boards to supply six copies of their plans and applications. Communication. Often, we're all out at different times, leaving departments without a way to access information. This program will eliminate that. If someone from water department needed something from the building department, but the clerk or inspector isn't, they can still have access to it. Safety, which is the biggest one. Our records on Laserfish can never be destroyed or lost. Paper records can easily be destroyed or lost due to many things. Organization. Our records room can easily be maintained with very little needing to be placed down there. This will, this would eliminate needing to close the village hall for the designated three days out of the year for record management purposes. So, this chart represents the amount of documentation at the start of the program that is scheduled to be digitized. The largest amount is, um, large documents. The large documents that make up, the, um, the, this makes up the largest part of the chart, because these are what, over time, has lasted. They get submitted the most to the building, planning, zoning department, and we do not have a scanner in-house that is able to process large format and images. So we use a third-party company of Laserfish, it's called E-S-B-I-S. The process for these is not a difficult one, but a time-consuming one. First, you must make sure there are no staples, paper clips, or bindings of any sorts in the pages. You roll them up and put them in the proper boxes. Those boxes must be labeled with the department they belong to, parcel ID number, and the property address. Example of that, just like this. After that process, the next thing to do is set up a time for the boxes to be picked up. I email that rep, I email the rep that is on our project. Within a timeframe of two to four weeks, they come and pick up the boxes. At the beginning of this process, I box up close to 600 set of site plans. We have had two rounds of pickup so far. We have about 150 packaged site plans downstairs waiting to be picked up, and an estimated 100 site plans that need to be packaged up. The next big, uh, largest part of the chart was building documents. The building documents make up a larger part of this graph, because it is what, are mostly, our office mostly consists of. Most applications we have are for building permits that do not require, that don't always require planning and zoning board review. We also, uh, have many record requests, which we are usually retaining to building records. These documents are small-formatted, so I can take care of these in-house. These records, the records room, has, records room is early as the 1600s, or, I'm sorry, the 1960s, and the 2070s.
Whoa.
It's early. So, I have digitized five filing cabinets and approximately 10 bakers boxes of documentation. Every single document can be accessed on Laserfish right now. Planning. Planning documents consist of mostly site plans and signage applications. Site plans, as I mentioned above, have a different process for digitization. Zoning. Zoning documents are very rare to come across, solely because the zoning board of appeals does not meet so often throughout the year. The documentation for zoning mostly consists of notices from our ZEO, code violations, and findings from the zoning board as a board of appeals. All these documents are small, are small format, so they can be taken care of in-house. This chart represents the amount of documentation that is remaining to be digitized. The largest amount being, uh, large documents at 48%, building 20%, planning 18%, and then zoning 15%. And again, the reason large documents are so high is because it is quite a process to get those done, but they are, they're written out there, and they're being digitized. So as I mentioned in the beginning, my goal is to work with each department to implement this amazing program. Myself and all the other staff members are committed to the growth and development of the village of Rhinebeck. Thank you.
Thanks, Miranda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important to just note for the record that these, um, documents, once they're digitized, um, there is currently no plan to make them publicly available, but they will be much easier for our staff to access, as Miranda stated, for foil requests. So, two separate things.
I'll just do my treasures report up here. I'd like to have a helpful, Miranda, here. Okay, so, um, this is my regular treasure, monthly treasures report. The, uh, general fund ended the month, ended the month with $508,925.30. The water fund ended the month with $80,333.40. And the sewer fund ended the month with $88,073.78. I don't, you, you all of it. Vouchers presented for payment, in the general fund, total $150,493.69. In the water fund, $46,388.77. In the sewer fund, $35,098.248. We had bills in escrow totaling $8,647.11. We had a bill for the compost facility grant, $686,010. And the police station upgrade, $32.91. The bike trail signs grant had a, uh, expenditure of $3,772.50. And I asked the board for, um, authorization to pay the vouchers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, moving on, uh, the monthly operating statement is provided with revenues and expenditures through January 14th. Uh, that has been uploaded to the cloud, and also, so you can view it there. The water and sewer billing went out for January. The monthly bills in the water total $23,740.3. In the sewer, $33,675.64, and those are due January 25th. The quarterly bills went out, $158,017.25 for water, $92,460.23 for sewer, and those are due February 25th. The annual hydrant bills went out in the amount of $18,000, and those are due February 25th. Adjustments were signed up by Mayor Bassett, and presented for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 What are you approving?
So, we're approving.
Water sewer adjustments that Gary signed up.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I have a few budget amendments, and we'll go through those. Um, the zoning professional services, um, I'm asking to increase that by $15,000, and then in, increase the departmental revenue by $15,000, which is the offset for the shared services for the zoning administrator. The clerk treasurer, professional services, the justice professional services, $2,500 and $1,200. Uh, increase the village hall cleaner, $2,500. As we approved that last year, it's 500 a month more, so I just amortize that out to the end of the fiscal year. Um, a loan for the street, LED streetlights, and for the principal for the interest, $77.10 and $1,024.5. And then we were over budget in the parks and rec fees on employees, so I'm asking for a $1,000 increase. All of those to offset with contingency, which will leave a balance in contingency of $4,564. So, I do have one is a, one is a prior year, um, it's a prior year correction, and that is to reduce cash by $18,712.77, and off, I've got, offset with interest earnings. So last year, there, it was the opposite way, and it was like $23,000. And, um, I probably should have netted that, but I didn't net it, so I'm just kinda doing the opposite of that one. That's in the general fund. In the water fund, um, again, for the accounting for the overtime, water administration, $3,000. Water utilities, $1,500. Offset those with the water health insurance, which is anticipated to have remaining funds of $4,500. And then the last item, which Martina will get to when she does the purchases, is a transfer from the capital water to the water equipment of $7,500. That's half of the, half of a purchase of a water meter, and the second half of that is from the sewer fund, capital prod, capital sewer account. And then there's the accounting for the overtime in the sewer of $3,000. Those are my budget amendments.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Um, so we're taking the stuff from the general fund, uh, mostly from fund balance, not from fund balance, sorry, from, um, contingency, which makes perfect sense. Um, highway, because of sort of the flux of staff there, we're gonna end up being over budget on payroll, not over budget, we're gonna be under budget on payroll. Um, building, planning, and zoning, we're probably gonna be under budget on payroll. Um, do we, remind me, please, we clean up those line items closer to the end of the year? Okay.
I mean, just because we discussed it in my report.
Yeah.
About the overtime, I'm just doing, trying to do some of them, so we don't have such a long list at the end of the, the fiscal.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
They're not over, I'm just anticipating those items.
There's gonna be some. Yeah. Okay, cool.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Miranda. Thank you for all your hard work, that's a lot of work in the basement.
Like to accommodate down there.
At least it's warm.
Yeah.
All right, so next, we're gonna go into purchase requests. First purchase request is for the village of Rhinebeck. It includes the village of Rhinebeck and town of Rhinebeck. Uh, the bills are separated separately. As you can see in the invoice that we received, this is for Archtop Fiber to bring Archtop Fiber 1 gigabit service into our server, which is in Town Hall, and shared by the town and the village. Uh, each one is separated in terms of its cost. So the cost for the village of Rhinebeck to get 1 gigabit internet service, um, the unit price is $3.99, but our total is $1,999.99 per month, which represents a discount of $200 for a three-year contract period. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the expenditure for Archtop Fiber to provide 1 gigabit service to our server.
Second. Pete's gonna be thrilled.
So, just a quick question. So, um, I will just charge that to the utilities?
Well, where do you charge spectrum today?
To the utilities.
So it's the same here, yeah.
So we're gonna end up terminating our spectrum contract.
Correct.
And then, closer to May, we'll see how, how it all works out.
Correct.
Financially.
Yes, financially.
Right.
Okay. How much do we know how much we currently pay for spectrum?
More.
More.
More. It's not so much the more, it's now we're getting 10 times the service. So, you know.
We're getting better service and paying less.
Yes.
And specifically for the police department, that now with the new upload requirements, we're going from basically 300 upload to 1 gig upload, which is gonna significantly save time for them as well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And next is a water department, uh, bill. You just saw what Karen presented, which was a transfer of funds for a new meter reader, uh, which would be split $7,500 each way between water and wastewater. So this is a new meter. Our current meter that we have, we have one, um, is more extensive to use. It requires a person to go out and kinda walk the village and go to the actual meter. You know, it's not the meter, but the reader portion of the meter on the outside of the house. This service, this machine now allows us to basically drive down the road. So we're taking a process that's taking greater than a day, reducing it to hours. It automatically uploads the data into a data file. It automatically then loads it down into the Neptune file, and Karen still has to do her thing with it, but we automated the process, improved efficiency, and, uh, reduced time to be able to, to be able to do this work. So the total cost of the meter is $14,951.27, which we've already allocated. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase from TI Sales, the new Neptune mobile data collector and data logging meter.
Second. Um, is this just, is this part of the reason why we've been upgrading all of the meters?
Well, Neptune readers are automatic radiometers, so yeah, we have been updating them.
Yeah.
So we could even use the old process.
Right.
Cause we couldn't do it with the old meter reader.
Oh, they had to actually like physically.
This even just updates it.
Think about this as new, a new enhancement.
Yeah.
To an old process.
Got it, okay, great.
It's the same.
On a lot of them, I'm sorry.
Well, it's the same unit at my house, it just interrogated from the street downstairs. Somebody walked in.
Yeah, they're not gonna walk up to your house, they're gonna drive by your house and wait you.
Exactly, right, but the, at my house, nothing's changed, just.
Nothing changes.
The interface between.
But this is also why Tom flagged me down three months ago and begged me to change my water meter. Yes.
We're upgrading everybody to the.
Yeah.
Meter yacht, yes.
Okay.
Right, it's not in lieu of people not upgrading their.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But then also, like, some of the business ones, they won't have to climb down in the pit.
Oh.
So it's, no, I mean, it's.
Tell me, I mean, we're, we're substantially through upgrading most of the village final.
We are, yeah.
To the new meter reading.
The residents.
Residents.
Right.
Uh, so this is a great feature. Again, it's an enhancement to an old meter reading that we have, which allows us to still do it, but it is an improved, it's exciting, again.
Great, yes.
We had a motion and a second, right?
Three seconds.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next is for me to attend the NICOM February.
Uh, third.
Second, third. Um, so I'd like, even though it's myself, I'd like to make a motion for me to attend a one-day event at NICOM. I plan to only spend one day there, which is the main day, um, at the NICOM conference.
$290.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Right, and, so, you're all set with Miranda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye, thank Miranda. Thank Karen.
Thank you.
All right, so I just had a request to move up the climate adaptation plan, because we do have a guest here, Michael, as well. So in order to get you guys out earlier, um, Vanessa's asked to move that up. So, the board is okay, I'd like to move the climate adaptation plan up to the top of the agenda.
Sure.
Thank you, guys. So, um, I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution to adapt the, um, climate, climate adaptation plan.
Second.
So, just a little background, this is a project we've been working on for about a year now. Um, especially wanna thank Michael Forlanza and Leslie Kidder, who were two volunteers working with the Climate Smart Task Force on this. Um, this was part of our, um, Climate Adaptation Planning Institute work with, um, which actually wraps up on Thursday. Our last meeting, we've been working with this cohort for years. Um, and, uh, I'm excited to present this plan to you, because it represents a lot of community outreach as well. Um, we did field a survey, we did a focus group, we tabled an event. Um, and it all began with a inter-municipal workshop hosted in Red Hook with the Nature Conservancy back in 2020.
Wow.
So, um, this plan's a long time coming. Yes, you were there. Um, it was a long time, it's a long time coming. Um, the plan focuses on six areas of, uh, climate impact and strategies for how to address them. The plan does not legally bind the village board to, um, committing to do all of the actions, but is really like our best, um, our best way forward, to set goals and to try to work towards those actions. Also.
It's familiar, doing a lot of those these days.
Yeah. But I also wanna say, like, we should revisit this plan at a minimum every seven years, but things, the climate is changing even more quickly than anticipated, and so we might need to revisit on occasion, um, as, as we see fit. Um, any, any questions or anything? Okay, thanks. Um, and we will, we'll publish it online on the website, um, and also make some hard copies available at Star Library and here at Village Hall. So, um, if people would prefer a hard copy, they can check that out at the library. And thanks again, Leslie and Michael. And thanks again, Leslie and Michael, for your dedicated support.
Thank you.
So you did all the work.
All right, all in favor, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So done, well done.
Well done.
All right, since we're in the process of moving things around, I'm going to continue that fashion. We have Robert Flores here from Delaware Engineering to talk to us about our water and our wastewater projects that we had bids that had gone out and received back on December 19. They were amended by Delaware Engineering. So it's a critical juncture in the process to now review these bids, discuss them if need be, and set a plan for going forward.
Sounds good. Just a quick recap, I'll do the water first and then the wastewater first, just follow the path of water there. So I see, it's been, it took a while. We've gone through engineering, we've gone through funding, we've gone through review, regulatory approval, bidding. So now we're at the award stage so we can move on to construction on both of these projects. And both of these projects, we opened bids on December 19. We had multiple bidders, and, you know, which gave us some good prices. And that's what we're presenting tonight. The water project, just to kind of give a real quick overview, there's a lot of detailed improvements, but there's two big game changers there. You're improving your treatment capacity. You have a bit of a bottleneck with actual capacity because two of your four sand filters weren't working. We're going to make them all four fully capable. We're going to address your THMs, which is your disinfection byproducts, by reducing the amount of chlorine you use. So those are the two major improvements to your water treatment. And then lots of other minor, hate to call mine, improvements that are needed. All right, so I think everybody got a copy of the bid results. So there's a lot of numbers in there. But, and we, all these contractors that we're recommending, we've either, myself personally worked with them on other projects, or Delaware, our company, has worked with them and other companies. And they're not, you know, they're not in the barred list and all that kind of stuff. So we are recommending, if we go through the, there's, in the water project, there's three prime contracts. Because on the New York Works Law, that's the way it works today. You have a G C, you have an electrical contractor, and an H contractor. We've got Keller &amp; Sons as the G C, Sasso is the electrical, and Miguel gets the H. Is there any particular questions on those?
Well, let's do it one at a time, we don't have questions. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing acceptance of the bids for our water treatment plant upgrades as identified by Delaware Engineering, and to move forward with awarding these bids to start construction.
Second.
Any questions?
Could you just briefly remind us how we're paying for this?
All right, so yeah, we've discussed this a lot.
I know.
So we have a grant for 3.2 million, right, that we received from New York State EFC. The total bid of the project comes to, I don't have that written off, Robert, off the top of my head, it's like 5 million.
The G C's 5 million, then 646,000 for the E, and then 119 for the H.
Yes.
It just shy of 6 million.
And so we've already taken out a bond for the rest of the project, and we've committed up to $400,000 out of our water fund to cover this. So we are fully funded moving forward on the water treatment plant.
So we've already taken out the sort of 2-point-whatever bond?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we took it for 2 and 1/2.
Yes.
And then we bought them, then we took 400,000 out of our own, and the rest is covered by the grant.
Yeah, I remember that, okay.
Remember?
Yep.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So as a call through to that, you'll have a notice of awards that will be authorized in the mayor's sign, and will send to each of the prime contractors. And they'll start, they'll get their insurance and bonds, and, you know, they'll kick off the whole series of events. Then we also need to authorize Delaware for the construction phase services, which I think you also have a proposal for that. So if there are any questions on that?
How did we get, didn't we originally sort of, how did it get from 3.5 million down to like 2.5 million? I mean, good bidding, or did we reduce the scope?
Which, I'm sorry, which numbers?
I mean, we, at one point we were talking about a $5 million project, and then it went down.
At one point we were a $6.2 million.
Waste, just wastewater.
Because wastewater, yes.
Wastewater.
That's the next one, yeah.
We reduced the scope on the wastewater, we're talking water.
Oh, we're still on water?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you're getting ahead of yourself.
Sorry.
That's okay.
My bad.
It's okay. It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so we should, you know, I didn't have this in the resolution, but we should make a motion to approve Delaware Engineering to be our design consultant for the water project.
Is that the amendment to owner, engineer one, that you had looked upon?
Yes.
Correct, yeah. So this gets us, this is a construction phase services for, construction administration for the three prime contracts and our inspection time estimated at 2,400 hours.
I'll second that. Where is that money coming from?
Contingency, it's incorporated into the contingency of the overall project.
Okay, got it, okay.
Because it is a floating thing.
Yeah.
We have a reference in terms of numbers.
Right.
We're going to hold Delaware Engineering to come in either add or less, but on a project escape, on this size and this scope, you need to have that oversight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm totally not arguing with that.
I'm not going to do it.
Yeah. I mean, none of us would do it very well, put it that way. Cool, yeah, thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll turn the page to wastewater. I don't know if you want to start with the first question there. So, but a little bit, a little background on the wastewater there, it's more of taking care of an old wastewater plant versus distinct upgrades to treatment. You have a 1984 vintage plant, a lot of old components that need to be replaced and brought up to speed.
Okay.
Yep. And to your point a few minutes ago, there was the original budget of 5.5 million. About a year back, we re-scoped it, got to the, you know, what really was needed, and worked it into a 3.5 million dollar project.
Okay.
And the financing for that is, you got 0% interest from EFC.
Yeah, we have a 5 billion EFC loan at 0% for two years.
But like two years, starting like.
Two years, once you start using it.
Yeah, so starting like 12 months ago or something.
Yeah, as well, we've already started spending money for engineering services. So the clock is already ticking on that. At the end of two years, it converts to a long-term interest loan,
Okay.
right, based on the amount that you've.
And that, that bond is done through EFC, right? We don't have to go out to the market for that?
No.
Okay.
Right. Now.
Yeah.
We have been in the process, three times now, where we've gone through the process three times of asking for a grant to cover this.
Right.
We have not, we've not been awarded the grant after three times, but that doesn't mean we're not going to, we're stopping there. We can continue.
Try again.
To try again, and.
It's harder to say no the more times you try, right?
Well, eventually, everybody else should be out of the way, and we should be out of this. You know, that's theory, if everything, you move off the top, you rise up.
Yep.
I mean, because there's, you know, in terms of, there's no rational reason for why we did or why we didn't. You know, I mean, Robert, I don't know if you can add anything to the process in terms of why three times, you know, but there's been other more, the state makes a grade, and they've awarded it to other people on the bottom line. You know, like Timely, Timely got a huge award for their wastewater treatment plant. But Timely was being fined because they were not in, not in.
Compliance.
Compliance, right? New Pulse, I think, was another one that recently got a major award because they were not in compliance. So the state's taking care of.
Oh, so we're being penalized because we're compliant.
I don't want to call it a bad act, but they're taking care of people that had much older systems that needed a lot, a lot of work, and they were gracious enough to give us a loan that allowed us to continue to do the project.
Right. Okay.
Is that a good summary?
Absolutely, yeah, the process is set up to reward the people who have been doing a bad job.
Yeah.
You guys have been doing a good job staying in compliance.
Yeah.
And our wastewater plant is, even today, running very efficiently and very well, right? But we're, as Robert said, 1984, right? We bought a wa, we enhanced our water meter reading because it's a new enhancement, new rules, new regulations, new processes, you know, are coming down the pipe that we, through the U V treatment plant and everything else, can upgrade to the latest standard in its time.
Turns out 1984 was 40 years ago.
Yeah.
Nobody do that math.
Yeah.
So it served us well. We're not increasing, just so everybody knows, we are not increasing capacity. We have plenty of capacity here. None of this is a capacity improvement.
Right.
It's a process.
Okay.
That's right.
Sorry if I stole your.
No, it's all good. So in the wastewater bids, some kind of scenario, right? We opened bids on December 19, the multiple bids. The two, the two prime contractors was Trinity for the G C, 2.2 million, still seeing at 300,000 and change for, those are rounded numbers, just, if you read it clear, not for the electrical contract. So.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to authorize acceptance of bids for the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So it's a simple thing, you know, authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award, and we'll kick all the construction stuff going. And then we have also the amendment to the engineering contract to get designed the construction phase services. Should everybody have to?
Right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Delaware Engineering to provide oversight for our construction and services, phase services.
Second.
Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions?
Are you all good?
No, let's do it.
Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to get back up to the top. Next is the police town coverage agreement. You all presented with this agreement many months ago. The town waits to the end of the year to award these contract agreements. So what I'm bringing forward to you is a signed contract by the town of Rhinebeck for the village to provide police coverage to be negotiated over the time, the time is scheduled to be negotiated with them, and the scope of services, and the increase in coverage and cost that we are now improving for them. So all this has been laid out, been reviewed. You guys have had a chance to review before we gave it to the town. They have now approved it. I'd like to make a motion to accept the agreement as signed by the town of Rhinebeck to cover police coverage for the town of Rhinebeck.
Second.
Question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, they usually use, what, like a couple shifts a week?
Two shifts a week on the average is what we do for them.
Yep.
You know, and then that, just so you know, that varies. It can vary only from a standpoint of the law of staffing. Village, we take care of ourselves first.
Right.
And if we're short staffing, you know, we tap into where we're going otherwise. And the towns are very cooperative, although they would like us to add a lot more police so they could get a lot more coverage, but.
We're working on that.
Yeah, we're trying to move forward on that, right. Next is for Gordon &amp; Svensson, the 2025 agreement. Now, remember Gordon &amp; Svensson is a legal offices located in McKipsy, New York. We predominantly use them for our land usage issues related to, any issues related to planning board or zoning requirements, et cetera, that we have been using Gordon &amp; Svensson for. In the past, this is a revised, basically the only thing that's changing is their rate for litigation-related work. Shall we build at $270 was, excuse me, the rate for for all service, except litigation, excuse me, is now 240 and it was 215. And the rate for litigation-related work was 270, was 250, now going to 270. But they did add in a paralegal, which we did not have before in the previous contract, for $115 per hour, so.
Yeah, they didn't have one.
They didn't have, now they do.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the legal retainer agreement for Gordon &amp; Svensson for the village of Rhinebeck.
Second.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Martina, can you bring us up on the EAP, please?
Sure, can. So we renew this every January, it's our employee assistance program. It's the same price as last year, $950 for the year, and it provides confidential assessments, short-term interventions, innovation, information, I'm waiting.
Sorry.
Information and referral services to our employees and their immediate family members, covering a wide variety of issues. I asked the board renew this agreement for $950.
So approved.
Second. Second.
Question?
What do people use this for?
So let's just say there is a hypothetical case where somebody needs some.
Mental.
Mental health services. Counseling would be a good answer.
Okay.
We refer.
And referral services.
We refer them to this organization as part of that process.
That's great.
And Martina, you've been pleased with them, in your work with them?
Yes, we have had members.
Do we have a sense of how often that's used?
Definitely. We have used it a few times, but not very.
I can't give you an exact number, and it'd be confidential anyways.
Well, I wouldn't want to know for what, I was just curious.
We have used it a few times, and we only passed it, what, two, three years ago? When we first passed?
Two or three.
Two or three years ago. We never had it before, and we brought it forward because we thought that it was a need for our employees to be able to have this service.
It's a need for everybody at this point.
Yeah. All right, all in favor say. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Eleanor Park, you want to appoint somebody new to the parks?
Yes, one more appointee, and that's May Rossi. She does, she's a member of the garden club, so we thought that would be a good fit.
Oh, great.
So I'll make the resolu, I make the motion to appoint her.
Second.
Any question? So.
Yeah, what does that bring you up to now?
Yeah, and also it says this conference was given to a veteran, a member of the Lions Club and a person with a background in landscaping. She checks the landscaping box.
Well, she kind, well, she checks the garden.
We already have a landscaper.
Yeah, we already got some of the others. I just wanted to sort of, you know, I just use most of the same language because between illnesses and so on and family issues, we didn't get the interview done at the same time that we interviewed the other people, but she did apply at the same time and so. So at this point, I think we should, you know, we're closing it off and we've got our first meeting scheduled for the 21st because I'd like to get going so that we, some of the issues that, that, you know, we've been charged with doing, you know, addressing, I'd like to get those started now. And then maybe later we do have room for more people, but we're going to see how these people work together first.
How many do you have now?
Yeah.
This brings it to six.
Yeah.
So I think the question was, the question is you already have a landscaper, you already had somebody from the Lions Club.
And we already have a veteran.
And you already have a veteran, so you're adding another person, but it doesn't fit into any one of the categories that you have.
Yeah, that's all.
It's an overlap for the category.
Well, no, the reason, no, we, I just, I didn't want to limit it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we checked some boxes. And that was the original. I just wanted to remind people what the original resolution was and to show that we have addressed, you know, that we've addressed those different categories as best we could.
Makes sense.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Martina. Launch and polling. You have that one.
Okay, so the 2025 village election is coming up. I asked the board to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Village Hall, 76 East Market Street in Rhinebeck, New York, as the polling place with the polling hours from noon until 9:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Martina.
Thank you.
Good day. Lydia, you're up for the ADU.
So.
Oh wait, yeah, ADU.
Yeah. Okay. So in the comp plan, well, let me back up. Well, no, I'll start there. In the, New York State recently passed a law called the New York State Plus One ADU Program. The comp plan recommended that, the exact quote is, "We support low and moderate income single-family homeowners who wish to build a new ADU on their property by partnering with a nonprofit housing organization in the New York State Plus One ADU Program." Hudson River Housing reached out to me in late December. They are submitting an application to become such an administrator tomorrow. And they need, well, they were looking for a letter of support from us. And because of the timing of our meeting, I was like, do you have to have a letter of support from us? How does this work? And it turns out if we don't provide a letter of support to the administrator, it cuts off the ability of our property owners to be able to access that administrator's program. So.
If they get, if they get it.
If the administrator gets, gets awarded the program by the state, gets to become an administrator. So our job is very simple. We give Hudson River Housing a letter of support. If they become an administrator, they will then work with our property owners directly to help administer this program. So the ADU plus one program, it allows folks to apply for up to $120,000 to be able to build or convert or maintain or otherwise make an ADU possible on their property. There are some requirements about it. All of the requirements that are in our law fall into that. The fact that we have a short-term housing law as well that restricts the use of ADUs from being used for short-term housing also helps that. So this is really just a question for all of you of whether or not we are comfortable having Gary sign a letter of support for this, for Hudson River Housing to become an administrator for this program that would then allow our property owners to be able to work with Hudson River Housing to access the money.
So technically we could sign three of these if three people were interested just to cover our bases, which is.
Yeah.
But we haven't heard from any.
We haven't heard from any of us.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, we're not cutting off our, yeah, if there are more administrators who want to work with people who live in the village of Rhinebeck, great.
Right now we're giving them a letter of support.
Yeah.
That's clearly all we're giving them in terms of, if, there may be other conditions or whatever, but we're not signing up for anything but just saying.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Go forth and try your best.
Yeah, if, if Hudson River Housing does become an administrator for this program, I was going to ask Krista to come in and give us a presentation for our property owners, but because there's going to be other things that they're going to ask us to do, but we don't need to do them. So talk about that later.
Yeah, that was my next question, but out of curiosity, is the 120,000 per eight, per house?
I think it's per, I think it's per applicant. I think it's per ADU and you're only allowed to put one ADU per property. So if someone owns multiple properties, then they might, maybe, I don't know. But I would imagine it's per property.
More to come if they get, if they get the award.
Do you know, do we know when they find out if they're awarded?
They will find out, I think sometime in February. Sorry. You can tell me later.
Yeah.
It's okay. It's, it's shortly. It's, you know, sometime probably before our fiscal year is complete. Well, this conversation will be swirling. And as part of actually the zoning code updates that the comp plan is requesting of the village is also to make the permitting process around building ADUs a little bit more streamlined. And so that coupled with this, I think, could be helpful for ADU construction in the village. Yeah.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, I'll get you an updated first with that letter.
Yep. All right, you might as well stay on deck here with this draw roll please for smart growth.
Draw roll please for the smart growth. We got the grant. So we were awarded $148,500 by the state smart growth through the Department of State, the smart growth planning to update our zoning code. And so that's fully funding. We had to do a 10% match, which we were covering by using Ken's salary. So we are fully funded for our zoning code update.
Amazing.
Well, this plus what we put into the budget makes us fully funded as well.
No.
You know, I, I, okay.
Okay, over $160,000. But we did, we did budget $100,000 to finish the comp plan and to start the zoning code process for this fiscal year. We've spent about $22,000 of that to finish the comp plan. But with any luck, we'll have a $78,000 surplus in that line item. I'm happy to hear.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thanks. So third time's a charm on submitting that grant.
Is there any timeframe within which this has to be completed then?
The grant?
Used, yeah.
We have not received the letter of, we haven't received the official letter. We've just found out about it from the Department, from the CFA website. But I can't imagine it will be less than two years and we're planning on having this done sometime in the next 18 months, so.
Only will find out when we get the letter.
Thank you, Tony, for your help with getting the letter from Sarah Holmes' office.
A pleasure.
Okay, special request, Rhinebeck High School. The Rhinebeck High School is sponsoring a art request. They're basically creating seed packets, very fancy, nice shapely packaged up seed packets with paintings from the art classes from the high school, which they want to hang on our trees and have residents use and plant it, and plant them in the spring. This is not unique to the village of Rhinebeck. Red Hook Community Center is also doing a similar thing. So these seeds have been sent out by organizations. The high school decided to want to use them and post them around the village. I've included pictures and everything for you to look at into what they plan to do. I'd like to make a motion to accept the request by the Rhinebeck High School to launch this program starting in Martin Luther King, over the Martin Luther King holiday.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Martina. You have the request for Democratic Hall usage, right?
It's on the cloud.
I have it too, yeah, never mind, I'll get to it. All right, so the Democratic Committee, Rhinebeck Democratic Committee under Michael Slavy has requested the dates throughout the rest of the year to use Village Hall for the Rhinebeck Democratic meetings from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I'd like to make a motion to accept the request for the applicant to use Village Hall.
Second.
Question? All in favor say aye.
I just want to, just to want to make sure that somebody lets them, lets him know that it's kind of contingent upon, you know, the availability of the hall. Because I know it's so hard to get meeting times.
Well, so ordinarily, if somebody puts in a special request, the dates that they select are the dates. Unless you guys do want to make it so that the only way it would change would be if it's a, I don't know, whatever specification you want.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up because, you know, we, for example, the comp plan was meeting on Thursday. We don't have that now, but I'm just saying that what happens if something comes up that they need a regular.
Martina owns a calendar. She schedules around it. She knows what's scheduled. And she'll work with whoever's coming in with a date to find a date to fit whatever they need.
So I've checked all of these dates and there's no conflict for our current meetings. That's why I want to know what your specifications are, like, do you want to boot them out? Because our standing meetings, there's no conflict.
Boot them out is a, sounds very harsh, but, you know, if we have some kind of, what if the, what, I don't know how the, you know, is there going to be an implementation committee, for example, for the.
Well, then ordinarily, the implementation committee would choose another night if there's a schedule of that.
Yeah, I mean, like, we've, I think historically, like, we figured out a way to, like, work around everything. You know, the implementation committee can meet at 7:00 PM or we can meet on Wednesdays or, you know, like, I think there's, there's lots of committees external to the village who use this space, like the garden club.
All hours in a day, including weekends.
I would say that the only time that any committee or outside user would be bumped is if it's a board, meaning the board of trustees, the planning board or the zoning board.
So, I mean, if it ends up sort of, you know.
I'm not totally comfortable with committing, that's a long commitment, just because I know that.
Well, you can vote differently. Will you all, I said all in favor say aye. Aye, abstain? Vote how, you can vote however you want.
I'm voting happy name.
Okay. Or vote no, all right. Okay, moving on. Tree Commission.
Okay. The Tree Commission, we have no actionable items for this, for this meeting. I do want to say that the Tree Commission has been working with Justin in zoning. The Tree Commission's been out looking at hazardous trees and we're working with Justin to begin enforcement. I also want to draw people's attention to the web. There is a, two documents I want them to take a look at. The, Joyce put together a 2024 review detailing the items, the things that the Tree Commission's been up to in addition to the planting, education, spongy moss with rachation and education. And then also, if you know, there's another document, in 2024, the Tree Commission planted 45 trees in and around the village.
Do you know what the total is now ever since for all 11, 12 years now?
We say it's over 400 at this point, well over, well over 400.
Been over 400.
And, and if anybody's ever interested occasionally, they can go look at Google Maps. Sometimes you can get an old map. You can see some of the small trees. If you walk by them now, you can see how large they have gotten. So it really, walk down, walk down Chestnut Street, you can see the difference. So I would just encourage people to go on the web, take a look at the 2024 year review and look at the list of the trees that are planted.
Good job, Tree Commission.
Yeah. Just give them heart, thanks.
Yep. Climate smart.
I also did my annual review, which I've submitted to the board. This is the fourth year that we've done an annual climate progress report. And it's fun to put that together this year because it felt like we got some stuff done, so.
Got a lot done.
Yeah, it's great. And then I also submitted my usual monthly report. I wanted to just highlight that we have launched the village compost program, the municipal composting program. And we had a ribbon cutting ceremony on Sunday that was really wonderful.
Well attended.
Yeah, we probably had about 35 people come out. The compost program now has about 130 households registered. And village residents are encouraged to sign up. Go to rhinebeckcompost.org. It's a free service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our village meeting at 7:24.
Yes.
Wow. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well done. Happy New Year, everybody. See you all soon.